Welcome, everybody. This is a special day in Doylestown Township when we reorganize for the 2014 year. Judge Bateman's here. How are you? You can verify where I was all day?
I know that you are working hard.
Judge Bateman is here to do the honors as we swear. And I guess the first person, Ms. Richard Colallo. How are you?
I'm ready.
You haven't moved yet, okay. You ready to swim the oath of office?
My wife, Marie, and the Bible.
Do you have a Bible? Bible's right in front of you, Barbara.
Well, I'd like to thank the Board for inviting me here. It's a real privilege and honor for me to be here. As you know, I have close ties to Doylestown Township. For those of you who are here today, public service, as you know, in many ways is a foundation of our community. So I know each of you will do a fine job in serving your community here as well. So if you're ready, I'm ready.
I'm ready.
Would you place your hand on the Bible? Raise your right hand and repeat after me, please. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Rick Colallo.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And that I will discharge the duties.
Of supervisor in Doylestown Township.
Of supervisor in Doylestown Township.
Bucks County with fidelity.
Bucks County with fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And Cecile Bowsay's here. With her Bible.
Bible?
Yep.
Raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Ken Snyder.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And that I will discharge duties.
Of supervisor in Doylestown Township Bucks County.
Of supervisor in Doylestown Township Bucks County.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
Also being sworn in.
Raise your right hand, please. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Patty Medd.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties.
That I will discharge duties.
Of auditor in Doylestown Township.
Of auditor in Doylestown Township.
Bucks County with fidelity.
Bucks County with fidelity.
Congratulations.
You need to sign the paperwork.
Your honor.
How are you?
I'm well, thanks.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me, please. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Steve Dury.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And that I will discharge the duties.
Of auditor in Doylestown Township.
Of auditor in Doylestown Township.
Bucks County with fidelity.
Bucks County with fidelity.
Congratulations.
And not least, Sarah Tomlinson, tax collector. How many of the Tomlinsons are coming up?
Bring them all up.
Bring them all up.
It's a good look, it must take you after mom.
Tell me who they all, tell me their names.
JP, Faith, David, Luke, and Laura.
All right.
And no, we're not General Hospital fans.
Which one of them, or is Tyler going to hold the file?
Tyler can do it.
All right, there you go. Raise your left hand and raise your right hand, repeat after me, please. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Sarah Tomlinson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of tax collector.
And that I will discharge the duties of tax collector.
In Doylestown Township Bucks County.
In Doylestown Township Bucks County.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations. My pleasure.
Thanks, Skip. See you.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in. See you again.
We're so happy to have you. And what a great group of people you are. We already said the pleasurable allegiance. No, sorry, I did that backwards. Visitors, public comment? Any comment from any of you? Okay. All right, seeing no hands, hearing no voices, we're moving on to announcements. The Board of Auditors are going to meet for reorganization Tuesday, January 7th at 7:00 PM here. Next meeting of this board is Tuesday, January 21st, 7:00 PM here. We're going to be closed Monday, January 20th, 2014, in honor of Martin Luther King's birthday. Christmas tree drop-off is going on now through February 15th at the New Britain Road entrance to Central Park, township residents only. And jump rope workout for kids and adults Saturday, January 18th, starting at 7:30 AM at Quetz Elementary School. And for further information, you can contact the administrative offices or DoylestownTownshipPA.org website. I also got a notice from Representative Quinn. I guess this is more for the Board Supervisors, but on January 17th, 9:30 to 11:30, there's going to be a seminar on the changes in the open records laws. She's going to host that seminar at the Pumps Township Building. And the Executive Director of Pennsylvania's Office of Open Records, Terry Munchler, is conducting the seminar. And I suggest that we send our records custodian.
Yeah.
And all the supervisors are encouraged to attend to learn the changes in the law. Correspondence, Pebblewood, Pebble Ridge Woodridge Planning Module.
Yes, I just want to alert the Board that we did receive approval from DEP on our 3M planning module that we had been working on for the Pebble Ridge Woodridge. I'm sure we'll be coming back to the Board with information on what the next steps will be. And just wanted to alert everyone, there is a 30-day sort of appeal process open right now. And so we do have it and have had it on our website as well, but wanted to alert everyone to that. And that's all I have for correspondence.
Okay.
When are the minutes going to be moved for approval?
After later. After review.
Okay. All right, with that, I'm going to step down as Chair of the Supervisor Board at this, you know, so that a temporary chairman can be appointed, so we elect new people.
Me?
Do I have to actually move?
Well, somebody, move to, yeah, she would, she'd do that. You don't need to move, you need to move that I be the temporary chairperson to make sure everybody agrees.
Can I chair around?
Just move that I be the temporary chairperson.
You are moved, so moved.
Thanks, sir.
Can you please be temporary chairperson?
Yes.
Is there a second for that?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye. Okay, in my limited duties as temporary chairperson, my first order of business is to solicit nominations for position of Chairman of the Board of Supervisors. Is there a nomination?
I nominate Barbara Lyons, Chairman.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Are there any other nominations? Now, is there a motion to close nominations?
I make a motion to close the nominations.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, now, all those in favor of electing Barbara Lyons as Chairperson for 2014, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'm going to turn it back to you now for Vice Chairperson.
All right. The Chair will entertain a motion for nomination for Vice Chair.
I'd like to make a motion that Rick Colallo is our Vice Chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other nominations for Vice Chairman? Hearing none, calling the question, all in favor, Rick Colallo is Vice Chairman.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, by the way, to my Board for the vote of confidence. I'm happy to serve at your pleasure, it's my honor. Thank you. All right, on to reorganization.
Director of Public Safety.
Director of Public Safety.
I nominate Barbara Lyons, Director of Public Safety.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any other nominations? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I will serve with diligence and a gold badge. All right. Looking for a motion to approve the minutes from December 17, 2013, regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors, a motion. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
All right, any questions, concerns, corrections? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
I want a suspension. Proposed guidelines for Supervisors, public meetings and chairperson. This is under Section C of the Agenda. We promulgated guidelines for Supervisors, guidelines for conducting private, I mean, public participation in board meetings, guidelines for the chairperson. And I guess pretty much what protocol. We started this several years ago, and we adopt these guidelines every year. It helps us to know what our rules are with relation to each other. You know, there's rules about the sunshine law, but that doesn't prevent us from being social and to deal with each other socially. It helps us to work with the public in a setting. The public knows the rules, how it conducts itself for the Board. Board knows its rules, how it conducts itself towards the public and toward one another. So these are the guidelines that we adhere to. And at this point, I will entertain a motion that they be approved in tandem. I'll second that. Is there a first? Oh, sorry.
So moved.
So moved?
I'll second that now.
Okay, do you have any questions, Mr. New Person?
No. They're very clear, very explicit.
Okay, good, thank you. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All right. Where am I now?
Board's responsibilities.
Okay, next item. Our Boards and Commissions all have a liaison, a member of the Board of Supervisors that serves as a liaison. In 2013, we have listed under our agenda who served as liaison for each particular Board or Committee. So at this time, we are going to entertain new liaison positions, or you can nominate yourself if you want to continue on with your particular Board or Commission. So beginning with Agricultural Security Advisory Board, Sean Twohill was liaison. And what is the pleasure of the Board for 2014?
I'd like to continue.
You'd like to continue. Is there anyone else wanting to continue or wanting this position?
No.
Is there a second for Sean?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Sean, you're it. Bike and Hike Committee, Sean, that was you. Do you want to continue?
I would.
With you? Is there another who wants to be Bike and Hike Liaison? Is there a second to Sean's?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The Central Bucks Regional Aging Task Force, Mr. Scarborough, who's now retired, was the liaison. Is there a member who's interested in this? Don't everybody jump at one.
I made a valiant attempt, but I could not.
I am not available 9:00 AM on Friday morning, so I can't do it. I would, but I'm not available. Anybody else? I think maybe the new guy.
I'll second that. Aye.
Pointing, or are you willing to serve if voted in?
I am willing to serve.
Yeah, okay. Okay, everyone in favor of Ken Snyder?
Absolutely.
Okay, yes, all right. Dog Park Advisory Committee, anybody want this liaison position?
I am currently the liaison, happy to serve again, but happy to also relinquish that responsibility to somebody else.
You have a lot of things. If you want, I'll do the dog park.
No, I'm good.
No, I'm serious, it's up to you.
Well, the reason why I would, I'm okay with it is because the Open Space Farmland Preservation meets the same night, one hour before, I'm already here.
Twisted my arm.
Okay. But that would, okay. Everybody okay with that? Is there a second to that? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, Barbara Lyons, it is. Municipal Authority, Rick Colallo, you were the liaison, do you want to continue?
Yes.
Is there anybody else who wants this position? Is there a second to Rick?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Rick, you're it. Environmental Advisory Board, this one's up for grabs.
I nominate Ken.
I'll second.
I would like that one.
But you're going to love the CB regional.
It's good that you came today.
All right, there's a first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Ken Snyder is the new liaison to the EA, you know, the Environmental Advisory Board. Friends of Kids Castle, also open for grabs.
I nominate Ryan. Second.
You have young kids, so.
I have interest in it, I'll do it.
I wasn't, it was a subterfuge, I thought she would enjoy it.
Yes. All in favor, Ryan Mannion is the Kids Castle liaison. Thank you. Open Space Farmland Preservation, anybody want it? You get that. And the Dog Park, if you want it. Two for.
A two for.
I nominate you, Barb. Okay, there's a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Parks and Rec. Sean Twohill, do you want to continue?
I'd like to continue.
Is there anybody else who wants this position?
Oh.
Okay, all in favor, Sean?
Aye.
Personnel and Administration, kind of follows the Chair. Everybody okay with that?
Aye.
Okay, by acclamation, Barbara Lyons will continue on. Planning Commission, Richard Colallo.
Aye.
You want to continue?
Yes.
Okay with that?
Okay.
Okay. There's a second down there by Mr. Snyder, all in favor?
Aye.
Public Safety, that typically follows the Chair.
Barbara, I nominate.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Public Water Sewer Advisory Board. Rick, you want to continue?
Yeah, I'd like to stay with that.
All right. Is there a second to Rick?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, was there anybody else interested in that? I'll go back. I'll undo it. Okay, no, okay. Roads and Bridges, Ryan Mannion.
I nominate Ken.
I'm fine with Ken taking that over.
You good?
If he so chooses, if he wants it.
All right, is there a second to Ken Snyder's Roads and Bridges?
Second. Oh, I'm sorry, I made nomination, I think.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Telecommunication Advisory Board.
I nominate Ken.
I'll second.
You okay with that? This is a good one. They're all good ones, they're all good ones. All in favor?
Aye.
We're not dumping on you, these are really good committees. Traffic Advisory Committee.
I'd like to stick with that.
I nominate Ryan.
All right. All in favor, Ryan?
Aye.
And last, Ways and Means. Ryan, you want to stay?
I would like to stay.
Anybody else want it? Is there a second?
I'll second Ryan.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're done. Now, Township Appointments for 2014. And you all see them, there are no changes from last year that I can see, are there?
No, not at this time.
So all personnel and expert representatives are professional, they're all the same.
They're all listed, they're 1 through 23.
And Dean Logan still, but pleased to. Okay, we're going to go 1 through 23. Is there a motion?
I make a motion when approved, Township Appointments Number 1 through 23.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That would be 5-0. Now, Appointments to Boards and Commissions for 2014. For the Arborist, Robert McMullin.
He's currently on, right?
All right. Well, we have them all there, take a look, there are too many names to, we have so many volunteers who are Boards and Commissions, let's not name them all, but they are listed and they are numbered succession, 1 through 18.
Can I ask a question about this? Is there other, since the committees are larger, have more people on it than what's listed here? What's the difference? I mean, if a committee has six and there's only two names here, what does that mean?
That means that their term has expired at the end of 14.
So these are just the expired ones?
These are ones, and they've expressed an interest to be reappointed.
To be reappointed, very good, thank you.
Got it? I'm sorry, I didn't make that clear.
No, that's all right.
1 through 18.
I'm in favor of all the appointments from 1 through 18, unless there's someone, if someone has an objection to.
Everybody okay? Is there a second to the?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. The Administrative Office Hours and Meeting Dates for 2014 are set forth in paragraph G of the Agenda.
Yes, and there is a memo from Sandra. We get to send in the office hours. We have the dates, but then we also have the office hours and recommending that we go back to 8:30 or 4:30 based on Sandra's memo.
Okay. We tried different times of the opening later, closing later, opening earlier, closing earlier, but we found that it's better to keep with a standard 8:30 to 4:00, what?
8:30 to 4:30. We have not had, even though we've been open earlier on Monday and later on Monday nights, we're not getting, we're getting less than three calls in a two-week period.
Okay. All right. Well, I think we can do this in tandem, too. Is there a motion to approve from A to zoning, from Agricultural Security Advisory Committee to zoning hearing board, those meeting dates are set forth in sub-paragraph G or paragraph G. So motion to approve?
I make a motion, we approve the dates and the administrative office hours and the changes in schedule, the entire G.
Okay, fair enough. All in favor? Am I, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any questions from anybody here? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, 8:30 to 4:00. Yeah, I'm just looking at when our meeting next year.
I already filled my calendar, so I hope we don't change anything.
January through December. Fire Police. And please note, if you're on a Board or Commission, please note from the Agenda when you meet, because it's, they're, you know, the dates are different for each Committee and Board, so figure out when it is. If you're new, especially if you're new to a Board or Commission in the Township, you've got notice of when the meetings are, but they're set out in this Agenda, so it makes it, keeps it pretty clear. Sub-paragraph 8 or paragraph 8, acceptance of the Fire Police, there's a memo from Dean to Barbara Lyons, that previous Chair, new Chair, regarding the appointment of a new police officer. Has everyone had the opportunity to review it?
Yes.
These are just Fire Police.
These are just the Fire Police.
Yeah, I'll just.
These are the list of the Fire Police from Doylestown Fire Company.
Six of them, six.
Okay, gotcha, there's a new guy later on, get around. All right.
I make a motion to accept the list of Fire Police that Chief Logan has suggested.
Okay. All in favor? Oh, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, under designation of depository, is there a motion to approve the depository?
I'll make that motion.
A second, thank you. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Appointment of the Pension Committee, Mark Whitner wants to be a voting member.
Make a motion to approve.
For Mark Whitmer, okay, is there a second for Mark?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we need a non-uniform Township employee, we need a voting member, is there a nomination from the Secretary?
There has been an interest by Sinclair Salisbury, and no one else has expressed any interest at this point.
Mr. Salisbury?
He's not.
He was.
Was he?
All right.
I'm sure if appointed, he would.
You can represent he's interested?
Yes.
Is there a motion to appoint Mr. Salisbury Head of Zoning to the non-uniform Township Employee Voting Member?
So moved.
Pension Board, okay. Is there a second? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Me too. Board of Supervisors, voting member for the Pension Committee.
All of you, you're all on it.
You're on.
We're all voting.
You're all on automatically.
We have to appoint ourselves to it? You sure?
It's by your ordinance.
Oh, so we're automatically on it?
Mm-hmm.
Well, I know we're automatically, but we don't need, still don't have to vote.
No, you don't have to vote.
Then why is it here?
Just as a matter of information.
It tells you who's.
Stephanie Mason, do we have to vote you too?
Unless someone else wants to.
No, I think it's, I think it's, I think that's in your ordinance, too, that the manager is the.
Secretary for the Pension Plan.
You're a non-voting member?
Right.
Okay.
Just lays it all out, so everybody knows who is, who serves on the Pension Committee.
So we really don't need to vote on any of that. Alright, Appointment of the TCC Representatives. Yes. Backman.
That is the Bucks County Tax Collection for the Earned Income Tax. We have a countywide committee that meets quarterly in Warwick. I have been representative in the past, Ken Wallace, our finances are alternate. They are looking for a, each municipality to have a second alternate to the committee.
Do you have a recommendation?
I would probably be one of the Board Members, I think would probably want to be that. Typically, Ken or I go, so you would only have to go unless the two of us were unable to attend, and that has not happened, so.
Who wishes this position? Oh, I'll nominate myself. Anybody else care for it?
Second.
Guess not.
Okay. All in favor of the only person? Aye. Okay, thank you. Alright, and then, as far as the others are concerned, I think we, can we vote in tandem that you and Ken Wallace are the representative and alternate? And all, is there a motion?
I make the motion, Stephanie, Ken, and Barbara as the second alter, alternate for the TCC Representatives.
Okay. Well, I've already been voted on, so.
Okay.
Just Stephanie.
Just Stephanie and Ken.
And just Stephanie.
Is there a second to Stephanie and Ken?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, here we go to the State Annual Convention, and that's in April. We're all delegates, and then we need one voting delegate. And that voting delegate is selected by the Board.
I'll nominate Rick as the voting delegate.
Okay?
Second that.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, Rick, it is you. Do I have, we don't have to vote ourselves, it's fine. Resolution 1747, Amendments to the Fee Schedule, that's attached, you know, our proposed resolution and the 2014 fee schedule, my memory serves, we haven't changed.
There are some changes in there, and they are highlighted in yellow.
Okay, additional escrow, not, not, not anything to the detriment of.
No, no, just.
It's going to raise cost of fees or anything?
No.
Alright. Okay.
I make a motion to board, approve Resolution 1747.
Is there a second? That's for the proposed resolution and the fee schedule. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 1746, for 2014, the Compensation for Professional Services.
Make a motion, we accept, or we approve the Resolution 1746 for 2014 Compensation for Professional Services.
Okay, is there a second? A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Not my manager's contracts, I was in the contract. You've all had the opportunity to review the contract for Stephanie Mason, is there a motion to approve?
I make a motion, we approve Stephanie's contract.
Second.
Okay. Questions, concerns, all in favor?
Aye.
Current mileage, set by the IRS, effective January 1st, 2014, 56 miles per hour. We have to adopt that.
56 cents, yes.
56 miles.
You have to approve it.
56 cents per mile.
You have to approve it.
Yeah. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second?
A second.
But before we vote, it can be less than 56 cents per mile, that's just the.
That's the current IRS limit for 2014.
That's the limit, but we can adopt a lesser amount that we reimburse, can't we?
Yes, we can.
You can.
But we, in the past, we've gone with the IRS. I'm not saying we have to, but in the past, we've done whatever the IRS has set, but you certainly, it's open for discussion.
You good with it?
I think we should do what the IRS recommends.
I can't imagine you have a significant amount of reimbursements, do you?
Not usually.
Yeah.
Alright, service de minimis, anyway. Alright, is there a second to the motion?